All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lahuna City Council. I will now call this meeting to order. It is December 4th, 2023. The time is now 6:00 P.M. If we will all stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, as the leaders of Lahuna, we gather together for this city council meeting, seeking your wisdom and guidance. We pray for your presence to be felt in this room, that we may be guided by your love and grace as we make decisions that will impact the lives of our citizens. We ask for your help in finding solutions to the challenges that face our community. May we work together in unity and harmony, putting the needs of our people first. We also pray for the people of Lahuna that they may be blessed with health, prosperity, and happiness. May our city thrive and flourish under your care and guidance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. If you'll stay standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Stoker.
Here.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochola.
Here.
Pantoja.
Here.
Rickoff.
Here.
All right. Minutes of the previous meeting. I entertain a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask. Nope.
I just wanted to say, Joe, that I thought your comments that you made for your presentation the years of service were very thoughtful and worthy of being memorialized. And I know they weren't in minutes, but I just wanted to compliment you. I thought you did a really excellent job on that. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. It's nice to have a full council again. Before we get into citizens' participation, we have a special guest who I'd like to have come up to the podium. If you want to hear his mic, Rick. You know, Adam Frisch is a candidate for Congressional District 3. He was a candidate last year as well. He came down to hear some issues for our area. We had a good discussion this afternoon. He's been here since yesterday, too, right?
Yep, yesterday as well.
So the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the city council. It's great to be here. I spent eight years doing my own elected community service, as I call it, city council up in Aspen, Colorado. So I feel your joy and pain. Hopefully, I have more of the former these days. But I had a great conversation. I've known your city manager for a little bit of time through my association with Action 22, which I believe that up 20 of the lifeblood of our district. So just real quick, our district, for those who don't know, it's better than the state of Pennsylvania. Takes ten hours to go from here up to the very northwest part of Colorado. But we do live in the most beautiful part of the state and the most beautiful congressional district at the 435. I just been on, I'm on 45,000 miles of listening and learning. And I've had a chance to talk to some of you. I hopefully have a chance to get to meet some of the other ones next time we come back. You know, the mayor said keep it under three hours, so I'll keep it under a couple of minutes. But I'm here for questions and listening and learning. We can figure out how to have that conversation over later on. But I've been here five or six or seven times. I seem to be at the Cooper Kitchen as many times as I come here, which is awesome. But it's all about kind of protecting our way of lives and a lot of small-town living. And there's obviously a lot of pressure from Denver and D.C. on just the rural way of life, whether it's agriculture, ranching, farming, just growing up, and making sure that we all enjoy living in our small community and really getting to know everybody. And that's something that gets lost from the big city up in Denver and definitely out of D.C. So I'm honored to be here, and it's great, and I'll be back sometime at the start of the new year. So I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and happy and safe holidays to your families. I'm happy to take questions, but I also want to respect everyone's time here.
And I'll just add, with Adam, we kind of did a dump on him this afternoon with all of our problems. And I was disappointed because he didn't give me any, you know, what he was going to do immediately to fix them all. But he listened, and that's the important thing for anybody, whether you're sitting up here, you're running for whatever office you're running for, is you listen, and then you don't just immediately answer. Because if you immediately answer, then, you know, you're not really listening. So thank you for taking the time to listen to the problems that we have.
No, I appreciate for all your service, and you earn every big buck you make up here, and I appreciate the work that you do. And look forward to coming back. It's a beautiful part of the state. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
You sure can, Doug.
How can we be notified when you're down for people to come with you?
Yeah, I will let you know. We're going to be coming back, I think, at the end of this month or the start of January. We'll be putting together our tour. I'm only home four or five days a month, and it's been like that for a year and a half. So I'm just always on the road.
What outlet do you use to?
But we'll reach out to some of the members up here that I've built a little relationship with.
His staff is waving furiously, but I do, I think they love your information.
We have two people with us, but yeah, whether it's one-on-one or a small gathering of people, I always happen to get together.
I would know where you're down.
Yeah, no, we're just trying to, it's hard when we have 27 counties and 50,000 square miles to try to figure out how to get in front of everybody, but it's certainly not, we're not trying to be stealthy at all. That's for sure about it. Yeah, but look forward to introduce myself after this. And sometimes we'll run some ads, too, to have like an open house public, just to get together and have conversations. I'm not shy about trying to share some of my thoughts after listening and learning and contemplating. So thank you. Okay. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night, great holiday.
Thank you.
Yep. Appreciate you coming.
Just leave it, just leave it. We're going to have citizen participation now. You will have five minutes to say your piece. Come to the mic. Please state your name and your address. Anyone for citizen participation?
Hi, Greg Coleman, it's with the Chamber of Commerce, 717 Bellevue. Just wanted to thank the city, police and fire, streets, everybody, all your help for parade lights. We had a good turnout, good success. Santa showed up, so much appreciated. As with everything with the chamber, could never do without the support of everybody in the city, so thank you very much. Next big event will be, I think it's the 28th or 29th of January, last Monday in January, annual banquet. The theme is celebrating Lahuna. Thank you again, thanks.
Hey, Gregor, you have any speakers at that?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Are you volunteering?
No, I was just waiting for a surprise guest or something.
We don't have anybody lined up at this point, and I don't know if we will, so.
I nominate Joey Oliver.
Douglas Golding, 1316 Lincoln in Lahuna. I would like to bring up a question which I have asked of the mayor, city manager, as well as some council members. That question is, what system is in place to bring ideas from Lahuna citizens before the council for consideration? From what I've seen, it appears to me that such a system does not currently exist. I would ask council to develop such a system so that Lahuna's citizens know their voices are heard and taken seriously. Thank you.
Anyone else for citizen participation? Going once, going twice. Okay. Unfinished business. This is Rick. Rick?
Well, first one, what we have is supplemental ordinance, making appropriations to the general fund, property management fund, electric fund, and wastewater fund for calendar year 2023. It's our cleanup ordinance. This is second reading. You guys did the first reading last meeting. And, you know, I do apologize, you know, Maureen had asked, you know, we did switch on there. We have down that capital improvements, but they still left the pilot company, and I wanted them to take off that, and they did. So, we're doing that. It's the same document.
So instead of the pilot company, it'll just have the address, correct?
Yeah, you know, we shouldn't be putting companies, or leases. That's our building.
And also, it's not $160,000 for a roof. That would be quite a roof. It should read building improvements. If you want to put including a roof, that would be accurate, but it's not $160,000 for a roof.
We insulated the building, had to replace the roof and some other components within the building to get the factory going. And it's turned out to be a great factory. They're already up to 16 jobs.
All right. I entertain a motion.
I'm planning to abstain, so somebody else should, I'll make a motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes six to zero. Yeah, go over that here.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, we had an application for a renewal of a tavern liquor license by Ross B. Laba, doing business as BJ's Porch Bar. All the supervisors have signed off, and so has the city attorney.
All right, Doug. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes seven, zero.
Great. The next one is an application for a renewal of a tavern liquor license by Eagle Lanes LLC, doing business as Eagle Lanes, 2420 San Fe, or San Juan Avenue.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously, seven, nothing.
Great. Now, the next one is a change, application for a report of a change of ownership and manager for Eagle Lanes LLC from Rick J. Harper and Judy Harper to Judy Harper. Now, one of the things I want to make sure that, you know, I say, because, you know, I was having a conversation with Mr. Malafondis. Now, you see how it's going from Rick J. Harper and Judy Harper to Judy? You know, Rick died, you know, but now, say that that would have been Rick Harper only, and then they want to do a transfer over to his wife, we would have had to have a public hearing on that. But since both names are on the application, and you're dropping down to one name, it's still good. Is that, is that a good explanation?
It is.
Okay.
And should that have been voted on before the liquor license because of the change of management or?
No, that does not matter.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously.
Great. Now, the first reading, and I'm very proud to read this one, you know, because this is an ordinance to authorize imposition of an additional tax of 1% on all sales within the city of Lahuna, providing other matters and ratifying actions previously taken relating thereto. And this is the 1%.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes seven, nothing. All right, committee and board reports. Do we have any committee and board reports?
I attended the utility board unless Patrick Bird wants to make a report. Hit it, man. Just a brief overview of what we covered, starting with the utility department. They had a 50 amp fuse blow at the 1,400 block of Adams Avenue, and that was replaced. They replaced the old cutout with a 200 amp, so hopefully that takes care of any future problems that don't develop. They started inspecting, and as you can see, have already put up the Christmas decorations, and they did a phenomenal job with that. Like I said, this is just a brief overview of everything. There's 23, or a total of 35 solar customers in the city of Lahuna. 23 customers returned power for savings of about $26.17 per customer on the average, and that's the utility part. Moving on to the cleanup month, which I know was in October, but that was an exceptional month of getting things done in Lahuna and helping keep our city clean. Just some things of note, the I know some people can throw stuff in their trash cans that are picked up by the trash service here in Lahuna, but there are certain things that you cannot dispose of. And there was 330 gallons of oil. We don't want that being disposed of, just thrown in the city trash can. And 55 gallons of antifreeze. There were 66 units of Freon, and there was 1,400 tires. And of the 1,400 tires, the state picked up the tab on 1,000 of them, so, which I think is phenomenal. Our friends at Clean Valley Recycling cleaned up the Arroyo at Third and Adams and picked up all the mess that's going out there. Sometimes people take stuff out there, and if if they're full, they may just leave things on the side. We encourage people not to do that. But if they do leave things, and the wind picks up, it gets blown into the Arroyo. I know Gary Cranston personally went out and cleaned up the Arroyo, and with the help of city crews, got all that trash out of there, so thank you for that.
They had mentioned to possibly, would it be possible to have like a trash bin there? That the city would pick up?
We discussed that, and the problem is that people will start throwing their trash there instead of the odds it is that they happen to have when they're doing the recycle. So we opted not to request that. We tried it kind of in the past with a bin of our own.
They may move it slightly further to the south and put up maybe a chain link fence, so that if any of that debris does not blow into the Arroyo or into the surrounding neighborhoods, I don't know. Over that with that. That's in the discussion. With that, and last but not least, oh, and the water department, the break in North Lahuna, just as you crossed over the North Lahuna Bridge there, I think it was at 109 and Line. That was due to years of buildup and concrete, and the weight just finally broke that cast iron pipe that was there since 1951. A special thank you to the city of Rocky Ford, which donated the time and their, the equipment of their back truck, which keeps that area safe for our crew to go in there and do their job. So thank you, Rocky Ford, for that. That was probably just shy of $100,000 in replacement costs. So as you can see, they're pricey things that Lahuna has to get into, but they restored that water. If it had been broken in a different place, it would have affected the industrial park area and the citizens of North Lahuna in their ability to have water. And last but not least, the city of Lahuna's lighting contest is ongoing now, and you have to have your lights turned on by 5:00 P.M. on the 14th so they can be judged by two anonymous judges. I don't know who they are. $300 to the first place, 200 to second, and 100 to the third place winner. So hopefully, good luck with everybody, and from what I've seen, just driving around, there's some awesome-looking houses already, so thanks for that.
I just want to add, too, on that, Patrick Berg is in the audience. He had his first utility board meeting, and we threw it at him. It was a long meeting, and he did very well. So thank you for stepping up to take on that position, Patrick. I appreciate it. Also, in that meeting, just want to add that the utility board will not be going back on its stance for the Arkansas Valley Conduit at this time. That was brought to the board, and we will not be doing that. So in case there's any confusion on that, we're not going back on that at this time. So that proposal is still at council, but we're still waiting for more information from southeast before we make a decision on that.
Will we be meeting with them again?
We hope so. We hope so.
Go have more conclusive information for us.
And then, any other committee and board reports?
No, but I would extend the invitation to the senior center advisory board that's going to meet this Thursday, the 7th at 10:00 A.M. to our newest council member or longstanding council members that would like to attend.
When is that again?
Thursday at 10:00. Thanks.
All right. City manager comments.
Okay. Well, I don't know if you guys been noticing out there, but there sure has been a lot of concrete being poured out there along that trail. They got about 75% of it done, and it's going good. They're starting on the crossings of Fifth and Third and finishing up some other stuff. They'll be starting, then they'll go over to put in the abutments. And then after that, just waiting for the bridges. Now, once we get that part done, then you'll see us come back in and finish off the parking lots and stuff like that. And so please, stay tuned, because a lot of good things are happening out there. You know, like I reported on last time, EPA has come through, and they've completed their six houses. And we already got five more ready for next year's program. On Carson Avenue, we're done with it, except for at Second Street. We need to pour two pans and put the asphalt back into it, and that might not happen until summer. The fire department, they sent, you know, some personnel up to that St. Charles Fire. And, you know, which is mutually, no reimburse us for our labor, you know, but the guys are back. But, you know, it's just like what you said, Paul, about Rocky Ford coming in and letting us use their back truck when we needed it. And like today, they called up, and their trash trucks went down, so we sent ours up to them. And that's the valley, taking care of the valley, everybody, and that's the way we roll around here. And I always have, always have, you know. It just makes me so proud, because I know different cities that they don't allow their equipment to go out of their city and won't help and stuff. So, but in Arkansas Valley, we help each other. So, you know, we're mainly working on winter maintenance. We met with DOLA on the brick and tile park, as far as the grant, as far as getting reimbursements and stuff. And we're all set up, ready to go, getting around, and we've submitted in for some reimbursements. We've also did that with our Brownsfield grant, and today had a meeting with EPA, and they're feeling pretty good about where we're at and what we're doing. So we're at that point, just like with the last time, because we were at this point at one time with the previous company. They're getting a quality assurance plan, and that's, you know, with something that they have to do to say, okay, how will they come into buildings and identify tests and get their cleanup plan with cleanup costs? I can't wait to get to the point where, after the first, where we start having some public hearings on this and roll out. Because, you know, this is to help the private sector, folks. I mean, you will not find where the EPA, federal government gives you money to get rid of your asbestos. This is the first time we've ever seen it. Let's make this program a real success, and, you know what? It doesn't mean that, you know, just because you get it identified and you get your contaminants out, that you don't tear your building down. What it does is it makes you posture for to move forward with your building in any way you choose. So this is going to be a great program, and it'll help out the private sector. And I'm hoping that a lot of our businesses downtown take advantage of this program.
Will you be sending out notices to them?
Yes, we will. And, you know, I'm already working with the hospital on Miller Hall. And so, and we got a couple of others that we'd like to target, but it's actually up to the owners. So, and last but definitely not least, I'll be on vacation starting the 13th. So, you know, Bill will be in charge, and I'm on a little down on vacation time.
Nice.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions for Rick?
This is not for Rick, but I sent you a text about the ordinance, 1659, the first paragraph. I think there's some verbiage missing in that that probably should be corrected. Says an additional tax of one, all sales within the city of Lahuna. You can do it, Mr. Eddie, but I just thought you'd point it out.
We'll look at that, Gary.
That's the last page.
See, obviously, my phone's not on up here, so I don't even.
You see Mark Markman?
No.
Ordinance 1659, that fifth page, second line.
President's citizens of Lahuna have determined?
Yeah, they're missing 1%. They're missing percent, not 1%. Just percent.
Oh, yeah.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Gary. We appreciate it, Dan. Were there any questions for Rick? And just so everyone knows, I've said this before, but, you know, when stuff comes up during, just the hustle and bustle of the day, I shoot Rick emails, and so if I don't bring it up at the meeting, that doesn't mean we didn't talk about it. So I shoot Rick emails all the time. I had a lot of stuff that's been sent to me, that's been talked to me, and we're working on it. You know, I think this election proved that there is a sense in the community that we need to clean up the community as much as we can, and whether that's changing some ordinances and tweaking some stuff in that way, we're looking at an approach on how we can help out code, law enforcement, with all of that to make this a safer, cleaner community. So just because we don't say it at these things doesn't mean that we're not actively working on that.
Yeah. You know, the case in point, Joe sent me a deal about, you know, when we're going to strike to downtown and stuff, the kind of weather dependent and getting the guys getting done with this trail and then working on it. So hopefully, it won't be spring, but it may be. And, you know, there was one about trailers and stuff, everybody parking them out on streets and stuff, and about, you know, how do we get better handle on it? And you had a third one about the multimodal station, and I did reach out to C.D.O. to say, hey, still waiting for the contract for the multimodal, you know, so we could get a design going. And didn't hear back from C.D.O. I know that within the rail sector on contracting, they just, they've been running through employees right now. But we'll put the press on them, since we got everything else rocking and rolling.
And let them know that you, you would like that extension on the ground?
Yes, I did. I already put in for an extension, you know, saying, hey, you guys have put the saw. You guys need to extend it. We need that same time.
Thank you for being active.
I just, I wish I had a better answer for why, you know, but I know that, I know a lot of places are struggling for employees right now.
And C.D.O.'s one of them. Just don't take them from us.
That's right.
All right. Governing body comments. Any governing body comments?
I'll start. I'm tagging along on your comments about we, what we heard in the last election. I feel like another trend was transparency in just how we do business. That should be obvious and user-friendly, and I, I've struggled with the website as a citizen, but now as a council member, I'm struggling even more. I think, like, you can't even find the agenda. There's not anywhere that it's obvious where to go to find the council agenda. And a lot of broken links. The site isn't searchable. So I had talked to Rick about it, and I guess that there is a plan. I just think that it's worth people knowing that we know our website could be a lot better and be a lot more transparent. So any, and you can wait till after vacation to get a signature update. You don't have to have it fixed before you go on vacation, but, and I know that website, it's a big deal. It's a huge project to do it right, and I would suggest that we talk to people about what they use the website for. And maybe people don't use the city website because it's not searchable and it's not, it's not very user-friendly now. But that's just something that I would tag on with the, people want our city clean. They want it, our ordinances looked at, but I think also our transparency. We can start with our website being a better tool for the citizens, so. Okay, and then the rest of my list. I was inspired to walk the trail between the brick and tile park and the locomotive. If you haven't been out there, here's an invitation. It's in my ward. I would be happy to walk it with anybody. I've already been down there a couple of times with my dog. It's exciting to see it changing. Wanted to thank, we had a group go out and talk about making sure that we maintain native plants in the area. I think that's pretty exciting. It's going to, the vision for it, when it's all done, it's going to be something. So wanted to thank Stephen Nielsen and Bethany Bender, who came as volunteers to talk about what native plants would be good. All right, news from Otero will probably become a regular part of my comments. Want to remind everyone, the master plan, public input meeting is tomorrow, 5:30 to 7:30 in the Rosito banquet room. This is a five-year master plan that we're working on. This is the time for people to come and give their input about ideas of infrastructure and what our campus could look like to better serve our community. So 5:30, Rosito banquet room, be there. Second, if you haven't had enough fun at Otero, tomorrow night, you can come back on Wednesday night. We're having our first ever Frost Fest. And the weather, initially, it was supposed to be a high of 75. I think it's cracked down a little bit. Now we're at a high of 65. But yes, there will be ice skating. It's a synthetic ice surface, I understand, so it could be interesting. But it's free, free. I stress, it's free to the community. Come, come to the campus. The booths with lots of fun activities, including Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. And Dr. Zant will be lighting our tree on campus. That is all from 4:00 to 7:00. And it's between McDivitt Hall and McBride Hall in the parking lots there. You won't be able to miss it. Also, it'll be plenty of parking and obvious where to do all of that. So, like, high schoolers are coming to do caroling. It's a very nice community effort, and we'd like to see everybody on campus. So that's Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00, and then that's it for Otero. My final comment is Saturday. Parade of Lights was awesome. Great job to the entire chamber. I know Christina Tazi knocked it out on the parade, and appreciate that. Appreciate everyone at the chamber. Thanks for including the council in the tree lighting. And also, the employees' party. I enjoyed being invited to that and getting to enjoy the holidays with many of the employees. I hope it can be more next time. And I wanted to thank Amy Hill. I think she went out of her way to make it a lot of fun, and it was a lot of work. So I know a lot of other people worked on it too, I'm sure, but Amy was pretty, pretty out there making the fun happen on Saturday night. So just a shout out to the people who made that party happen. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for going to the tree lighting.
Since that did.
Any other governing board comments? So, last time we had an election, we did some tours. We did a parks tour, and we did an industrial park tour. Maureen kind of got head start on, on the new council members getting a tour from Rick. But if you guys want to think of something in the new year, if we want to do maybe two of the same ones, or if we want to look at something new, we'll coordinate with Rick, and we'll, we'll get, get us a couple of tours going for, for, not just for the new ones, but for, for us as well, too, to just get a refresher, because even the parks tour we took, I'm sure it's going to look a whole lot different. Brick and Tile wasn't even all the way completed yet when we, it was just a space. It wasn't a playground or anything. So start thinking among yourselves what you'd like to see tour-wise.
Hospital. I'd put hospital on that list.
And then what we'll do is send out a doodle poll and get some times, okay?
And then, we have a lot of board vacancies for council and for, you know, just at large, so anyone watching. We have two positions at the library. Library board, two vacancies set to expire December 31st, 26. Planning commission has one vacancy set to expire December 31st, 2025. Senior citizens board has two vacancies set to expire December 26th. Tourism board has two vacancies to expire December 26th. Now for council, we need, you know, currently, we have a utility board, which is Councilman Velazquez. Planning, planning commission, which is Councilman Velazquez. Senior citizens board, which is Councilman Velazquez. We will have a hospital board, which is open right now. That was Elaine McIntyre at the time before she stepped away. And then we have a tree board up, which is Councilwoman Ochoa. And then I have two appointees as a mayor appointed, which is planning commission for both Tom and Shandra. So just start thinking about it. We'll, we'll be doing those on the next meeting, but I want you guys to think about if you want to, you know, look into those. And maybe give Paul a little bit of a break, or maybe not.
Thank you, Paul, for serving on so many committees.
I don't know, we'll see. Just, just start thinking about that when you, when you guys are taking a little bit of a break before the holidays. And then I do have to mention, Picket Wire, tickets are on sale now for Peter Pan. If you guys know the story of Peter Pan, the production will run December 14th through 16th. At 7:30, tickets are $18 and available 24/7 at the box office beginning December 11th.
Maybe 16?
14 through 16th, yes.
Are you Peter Pan?
No, my, my playing days are done.
He's seasoned.
No, I'm not. Amy?
Mammy.
Oh, I don't, I don't even know. I don't, I've never, my girls are in it, but that's about the extent that I'm versed in Peter Pan. Thumbing all off now. And then the other thing is just understanding your roles. Make sure you guys read the charter if you can, especially for the new ones. You know, there's not a whole bunch that we can do as far as employees go. That's something we talk to Rick, or Dean, or Judge Manley if we need to. I haven't had to talk to him yet about anything, so that's a plus. But, but that's how we communicate, okay? Dean is going to go over a nice little refresher of, of what we can and can't do, especially for the new members. Just not helping you understand your role, but when he comes back, we'll, we'll do that, and you guys can get that. I also want to do a work session at some point, so we can just have a day to go over what 24 looks like, what we're, what our goals are, what we're thinking about, and just shooting that off each other. So once we, we do that with our doodle poll, we'll, we'll get a, a day, a workday for us as well, too. We will not adjourn in this meeting because we have I can't, but someone needs to. There you go. There you go.
I motion?
Yeah, put your, put your mic on.
I motion to move to executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS 24-6-4024A.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. We will be going into executive session. We won't be conducting any business when we come out. So thank you all for coming out tonight.